Regular meeting, regular meeting of Detroit Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Kyle Lyle Workman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward and recognize and provide your name and address on the sign-on, sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission and anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, Blackberries, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. The roll call, Ms. Sardiky?
Mr. Appahedian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krenn?
Here.
Ms. Koopa?
Mr. Zanzika?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Item two is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a resolution? Mr. Stratt, thank you. Segmented by Mr. Tagle.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Appahedian?
Yes.
Item three is the minutes of the February tenth, two thousand fifteen, planning commission meeting. Is there a resolution to approve? Thank you, Mr. Krenn. That's supported by Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Appahedian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Number five is the zoning board of appeals report. Mr. Zanzika?
Yes, I have to say it was my first meeting and there were two items on the agenda. One was a variance request. We had thirteen twenty-one Boy Street in order to split up parcel land into two parcels, three hundred square foot variance from the seventy-five hundred square foot minimum lot size. And it was very interesting, the lots were, there were initially two lots that were split apart and they were combined. And once, after it was combined, the zoning organs changed, changed the minimum requirement to the lot size. So therefore, he had asked for a variance because it didn't meet the minimum for the zoning request. Didn't look, it didn't appear that it was going to pass the zoning board, so the applicant tabled, asked to table the proposal and he was going to come back after talking to the neighbors. So it was very interesting because it was, in fact, I believe Mr. Hudson was on a committee when it was heard a few years ago and that time it was denied also and it didn't look like it was going to pass. I would be interested to see how it works out.
Yeah, it's funny, some grant of variance and something you're thinking, I really shouldn't and those that you should give them and it's always interesting.
Yeah. There was one other one, it was a variance request for a rear end setback for a home that was going to be added in addition to a home, a fifteen-foot addition to a home. It was at the end of a cul-de-sac lot and it was a very tight lot and there was no opposition to it. It was a hardship, they couldn't, we weren't able to approve their property and it did pass. So it was a fifteen-foot variance. So it was one out of two, so it was very interesting.
Thank you. Item number six is the DDA report.
There was a meeting last week. They, the DDA discussed the budget, they discussed maintenance along Big Beaver within the DDA, and they discussed the move across Troy effort, which we'll be talking about this evening.
And number seven is the planning and zoning report.
We've got an application this week for a sustainable development project, which, which is, it's a, it's a way of grant, that we can grant administrative relief through the Sustainable Development Committee, which is, there's five members of the committee. I'm the actual, I actually chair it, Mr. Stratt's on the committee, Mr. Hudson are the city engineer and the city building official. We'll be, I'll be scheduling a meeting, it's for COT, which, which is a business that's on the corner of Coolidge and Industrial Row. They sell tiles and countertops, really, really nice, high-end stuff. He's acquired a couple of buildings on the north side of Industrial Row and he wants to do a building expansion and he's going to, he's going to go, he wants to go below the twenty percent open space requirement and he has to offset that with some sustainable site features. He's going to do some rain gardens and a roof treatment and some other things, so kind of neat project. So that, that's coming up. Do you have any to add? You look like you've got a...
No, Mr. Hudson and I know of a little situation that occurred.
Oh, many years ago with COT?
Many years ago.
Yeah.
With COT, their building.
Yeah. Um, we will have, I believe we'll have a site condominium application on the, on the agenda at the next meeting for a property on Waddles, east of John R. And we've got, we've been really busy with meetings, just informal meetings on potential projects. Nothing I can really talk about but like, but if, if, if half of these fall, we're going to be really busy in twenty fifteen, so the, things are looking pretty good. And, and a lot of residential projects that are going to be providing more opportunity for different, different types of residential options potentially, so really exciting time.
Very good. Next item is number eight, the master plan update, update on the Big Beaver Symposium, high school forum, and neighborhood association forum.
We're going to, Ben's going to kind of lead, but we're going to, but I'm going to chime in as I'm really good at doing. These are all, these are all kind of related with the, with our efforts with the master plan update. And when we get to the neighborhood association forum, we're going to ask Karen to contribute to the conversation because she was one of the attendees, so.
Very good.
If you want to lead it, you can lead that part too.
Yeah, we'll hand you the remote, you can just lead it.
I, I want to say I have a short presentation, I don't. I do have a long presentation, but I will go through it really, really fairly quickly. And I think this is a good time because it's been a while since we've talked about the master plan here and kind of where the process are. And we also have two new planning commissioners onboard, so it'll be good to get them up to speed to kind of where we're at. In terms of our timeline, we will talk about the high school forum that we had, we had the neighborhood forum. We have these as two, we actually only have one and we're only going to have one of these. And then we're moving in hopefully adoption somewhere in the April or May timeframe. I will note that on here we have a, a March second Rochester Road sub area, we have not scheduled that, so it's not going to occur on March second. But our goal eventually is to, is to go out to the three sub areas, the four sub area groups that we, we studied and present to them individually. So that's just background of where we are at this point in terms of adoption.
And this was a really, really aggressive schedule we put this together. And we've had, we've had a lot of different things kind of ongoing and a lot of, lot of events and meetings and things that, and it's probably, it was probably overly aggressive, but we, it is important to keep this moving, so there'll be, these other, these other events will, will occur soon.
So since the last time we talked or met, there have been three what we're calling public outreach events. The first was the Big Beaver Symposium, which Chairman Edmonds was involved in. I'm not sure if, was anyone else in the planning commission? I don't know if anyone else in the planning commission was there. The Big Beaver Symposium?
No.
Was that the one to walk across Big Beaver?
Yes.
All the different walkability?
Yes. Yeah, if you attended, yes. So the, the report is now out on that, you was in your packet and I'll quick, I'll briefly go over it. The student forum and the neighborhood association forum. So move across Troy, our Big Beaver Symposium was the concept of addressing pedestrian concerns across, mostly across Big Beaver, but also along Big Beaver, really dealt with those two issues. A little background, we have sixteen hundred residents or businesses that are either along Big Beaver or within close proximity to Big Beaver. There are an average of fifty thousand cars a day. Some areas of Big Beaver, those around seventy-five obviously get more traffic, but in general the, the average is about fifty thousand cars per day. The reason this came to the city's attention was for, for multiple reasons. The first was business communities came to the city and said, we've got a problem. We've got a hundred or so workers in our building and they go across the street for lunch and they can't find a safe way to go across Big Beaver, so they're playing Frogger. They're, they're kind of dodging cars to get across Big Beaver. And the first company that came to talk to us was Alter. They're located on Big Beaver by John R. in the Automation Alley Smart Zone area. And they came to us and said, we have, you know, we have this problem. So they brought this to our attention initially, to start the conversation. But, but addition, there's changing demographic trends. Walkability is becoming more and more important, more people want to get out and walk, there are more residences either proposed or we perceive to be proposed along Big Beaver, so the, the impetus for walking is going to be in higher demand. Our forum base district calls for attention to the pedestrian. We're requiring buildings to be brought up to the street, we're requiring pedestrian improvements in the pedestrian zone. Well, we should also accommodate pedestrians, if we're going to build for pedestrians, we should accommodate them crossing, crossing the road. Like I said earlier, we are seeing increased residential and we are anticipating increased residential. This is a project at Livernoy and Town Center Drive that, that the city council ultimately approved.
But there's indications that there's going to be residential on Big Beaver, that's fairly dense.
Soon, yeah. And the existing conditions are just a concern. This is the cross, this is city hall right in this location, this is seventy-five ramp right here, so this is the crossing at seventy-five. So obviously you can see it's, it's unsightly, unpleasant, and no one wants to walk in this environment. The underpass is an issue too. It, it creates both a, really a physical barrier, but also more importantly, a psychological barrier between east and west Big Beaver. So we really want to address how we're going to get people to walk under I-25. Especially now when we have the DMC coming online, we have these apartment buildings on, on Town Center Drive, we have city hall, and then across on the other side of seventy-five, we've got all this great restaurant. So how do we link up the two physically?
You're going to the fence.
Well, this is actually an old, I was just going to say, this is an old photo, this is about six months old.
I have the new photo.
Yeah.
That's the replacement of the fence. It's, it's a replacement of a chain link fence.
With a better.
With a better chain link fence. So obviously this has to be done in collaboration with the road commission, MDOT, this is a road commission road, MDOT, I-25 is an MDOT road that they're in control of. So there's all these moving pieces that all have to work together as we move forward on making improvements. So we, the city hired, hired Sam Schwartz Engineering. I actually worked with Sam Schwartz when I was in Chicago. The gentleman we brought in was named is Mark DeLaverne. He actually wrote the pedestrian plan for the city of Chicago, so he has a lot of experience in, in addressing pedestrian issues in urban areas. Here, here's just kind of the outline of what the plan entails and I'll, I'll go through the highlights very quickly. They identified three short-term projects and these are really priority projects that the city should be looking at now. The first is the Automation Alley Smart Zone Mid Block Crossing, that's the Alter Crossing that I just spoke to earlier. We targeted a implementation date of twenty fifteen for that, so we want to get it done this year. The second is the Civic Center reconfiguration, so right out here in front of city hall, as well as the trails and pathway connection, and I'll get into more detail what that is. And we're targeting that for twenty sixteen. And then the big elephant in the room is the I-75 improvements, and that's a to-be-determined based on when we can get MDOT to agree to some of our, our changes. And I'll have more about that in a second. So just a little quick background in terms of where the smart zone is located, it's just west of John R. and Bellingham Road. Automation Alley is this area that actually goes back into Bellingham Road. Alter is located adjacent to Bellingham Road, just to the west. The Troy Sports Complex is located on the north side of Big Beaver. Right here is where there's a strip mall, I think Panera's, or Panera's in there.
Starbucks, Starbucks, Einstein's.
Einstein's in there. So there's some, a lot of, of restaurant uses where Alter people are actually going to. And there is a, there is a pretty good length of distance that they have, we'll have to walk to John R. to cross to go back. And so what they're end up doing now is they're simply just crossing right, right over the roadway and creating some dangerous conditions. So again, these are very preliminary sketch drawings that we, that we, that we put together in terms of how we'd address the crossing, but there already is an existing light, I think this is existing light here, it might be moved here, but there's an existing light for, for cars going west, east, I'm sorry, eastbound on Big Beaver. There is no light on westbound Beaver, so we already have a natural stopping point at this location. So the idea was to tie in the existing stopping points and then put additional stopping points for automobiles to allow you to, to safe to cross Big Beaver's location. In conversation with the road commission, they said they would never support a mid-block crossing unless it was at a complete full vehicular stop. So it had to be at a, basically an intersection. They would not allow, and so a lot of places you see where you actually, pedestrians press a button, lights light up and you, you cross at that point, but the vehicles are not required to stop. They said they would only approve a mid-block crossing where there's actually a light to stop the cars to allow pedestrians to cross. So we're kind of working with the existing conditions that we have out there.
When we were at a study meeting with the city council to discuss the draft of this document, the owner of the, of the Troy Sports Center and the property to the north actually said publicly that he'd be willing to put some money towards funding this, so the, it's, the, the hope is that we have some partnerships with some of these businesses to contribute to the funding of the crossing.
I'll even might laugh at this design because this design is actually backwards in how you really often like want this to be laid out. Normally you'd like, you'd like it to be opposite. What you don't, how this is, how this is shown is people cross here and walk this way. They're walking with traffic. How you really want to be is walking against traffic so you can see the traffic that you're going to have to see when you cross. However, we are very constrained with the existing left-hand turn, other access points, the existing light system, and this is the only way that this really feasibly works is, is reversed. It still works, the road commission is okay with this design, it is just not ideal with how you ultimately like it to be, but it is what we're trying to, again, fit into an existing environment out there. The next short-term, near-term is the Civic Center Drive crossings here at, at city hall. We actually have, have shown two crossings. The first is right in front of city hall here, and the next one is at Spencer Street, which is right across from the, the Umaria location. This is a more important one, however, this is potentially a more feasible one based on conversations we've had with the road commission because we have, like I said, this elf in the room with I-75 and they have some concerns about the ramp locations of the crossing here at city hall. So these are shown in plan view. The first one at city hall would line up with the existing access drive off of Civic Center Drive. Second one on Spencer would be located, some, and these are, this is a very generic location, it can be, it can float along in this, this area, but, but basically line across from the Marriott. The importance of this is important for several reasons. In conversations with the mayor and staff, there was discussion about actually putting a full intersection in this location to allow left-hand turns out of city hall property onto Big Beaver, to go eastbound. That's something that we've raised with the road commission and they push back a lot, but it's something that we're still going to try to continue. And, and the reason for that is with the DMC coming online, additional residential back on Civic Center Drive, potentially more residential or more mixed use on Civic Center Drive in the city hall, there's a lot of traffic that comes out of this, this drive and wants to go eastbound on Big Beaver. What they end up doing obviously is either going to the crossover a mile and a half or half a mile down the road or taking the seventy-five loop and coming back to the ground.
That was my question is, you know, I have made the mistake of wanting to go east on Big Beaver and coming out of Civic Center Drive to do it. I don't do that anymore now, you know, you have to go to Town Center. But what is the distance to the next U-turn around? Because it seems like forever.
It's very long.
Crook's Road.
It's, it is, it's darn near Crook's Road. That's ridiculous.
Exactly, Crook's Road, just before Crook's Road.
For the next U-turn around.
The concern of the road commission and ultimately, would ultimately also be an MDOT's within their scope of authority because it's so close to the seventy-five ramp, is the potential, not stopping traffic coming westbound on Big Beaver, but traffic, stopping traffic coming eastbound on Big Beaver, because then they start backing up and blocking the ramps at seventy-five. So that's a hurdle that we'll have to, have to deal with if, if a full turn, left turn is, is, is in the works.
It seems to me, excuse me, it seems to me that from a usage standpoint, Marriott certainly has more people than you have at city hall that would be potentially going across, it seems to me. From a usage standpoint, I think that makes more sense.
Hi.
Yes.
But with the library, because if you're coming down Civic Center Drive, I've done that exact same thing, coming out of the library, coming down Civic Center to Big Beaver, and then you go for three quarters of a mile to make the U-turn. It's irritating, made me cough.
Sorry. No, come on. And the other reason why this was a high, a, a priority project for, for the city as well as actually in the road commission really actually liked this concept is the city is in, is, is putting out a proposal to create a trail connection to the Clinton River Trail, which starts at the dog, proposed dog park, which is up, up of Livernoy across from Town Center Drive. This would be a direct connection from, ultimately from Clinton River Trail through the pathway to Big Beaver. So it, it just is another, you know, filling in the gaps between pedestrian connections and trail connections that the road, that the county is actually trying to promote. So the county actually was very supportive of this, this, taking out the engineering and traffic issues, just the connection to the future River, River, Clinton River Trail. We put together some, some kind of sketch-ups of how this, how this crossing would look at, at, at Civic Center Drive. This is the DMC, this is the proposed crossing. We would have some pedestrian features at the corners, we'd have a, a waiting area mid, mid, in the median to allow for some control at that point, as well as on, on each side. So it just is intended to make more interesting as well as safe crossing in this location. Just another perspective of how it would look.
There would be no, no traffic signals there, just...
There, there are, there are traffic signals, there are traffic signals for, for pedestrian crossing.
Okay.
A full stop.
But not for me.
This is not show, this is not show the full left coming out city, out of, out of the city hall drive, this is simply just a pedestrian crossing, this location.
This is, this is concept only at this point. This really, it's got to be vetted. The road commission's going to play a, obviously a vital role in that.
The other recommendation was, the last short-term was I-75. And we, this, we debated this back and forth in terms of how aggressive we should be in terms of making recommendations. Initially, we had recommendations to actually change the ramp locations and change the dimension of the ramps, and that went a little bit too far. So basically, there's three short-term recommendations for seventy-five. The first is to consider raised crosswalks at the intersection, so you, so when cars, two reasons. One is when cars hit it, they'll know that this is a place where they need to slow down. And second, it would also highlight the pedestrian by put them, putting them up a little bit higher of, over the sidewalk so that people actually know that they're crossing. Light all pedestrian islands, these are very dark at night, you can't see, you can't see them, they're very, you know, obviously very dark. So at least putting lights up to draw attention to these crossings as well. And lastly, continued maintenance on sidewalks and pedestrian islands. As you can see from that earlier picture, the city and really the county is not maintaining the, the property there. So we have actually started discussions about the city taking over maintenance of Big Beaver sidewalks, uh, moving forward.
Ben, was there any thought to putting a signal at the exit ramp on seventy-five to Big Beaver? I know on the west side, not on the ramp itself, but a little further out, there is a stoplight. But I'm just thinking, depending on the time of day, a pedestrian trying to cross that sidewalk with a ramp, his chances of getting run over are probably real good.
You know, Mike, you raise a really good point. There is a, there's an existing light here. You are required, you are supposed to stop at this light if you're going to go onto Big Beaver, this location. Most cars don't. Our initial plan actually showed a light, moving a light, actually moving a light back here to show you need to stop to do, to wait for the light to turn before you can actually go under the ramp.
You know, I take that all the time. I don't think I've ever seen that light. It looks as though it's designed so that it may be red, but if you're going on that ramp, you can disregard the signal.
You're, you're, you couldn't get, you can get pulled over for, for running a red light at that.
Well, that's a real ambiguous area then.
We have to highlight this, but one of the plans we've shown here is this is, this is the existing slip ramp onto Big Beaver. If you see, we've actually tightened up the radius to require cars to slow down when they actually make this turn. That's something else we're, we're kind of showcasing here. If you can see, it's in this tube, actually shortened the radius. So again, another, another, just a visual clue that you need to slow down before you enter I-75.
If I may, I, I think you're going to find potentially the same problem we had when we were talking about the project last week with that turn radius. If you've got a big eighteen-wheeler going around there, it's just going to ruin that ramp because they're going to go right over the curb.
The most, in my opinion, the most dangerous crossings right here. Because there's no light and then it's cars, as soon as they hit this bridge, they're in acceleration mode, they're thinking about being on I-75. So as soon as they get into the slip lane, they're, they're accelerating and they're not thinking about pedestrians. So it's...
And you could make the same case of the, of that one up there too.
My, I actually walk all the time from city hall to the Jersey Mike's, up to Noodles, up that way, and that is the most dangerous, right there, because I don't know how many times, if I don't pay attention, I'm going to get hit.
Yep, absolutely.
And some other short-term recommendations along, under the, the I-75 underpass is just to brighten the space up and make it more lively and make it more enjoyable, a walking experience. So install LED lighting, put in public art, put in landscaping when and where it will grow under there, and install the fence, which we have, have done that. So these are some examples of lighting that, that would kind of brighten up the space and add a little bit to it. This is the extreme, I understand that.
Cool, can I get...
Public art, this is in Detroit somewhere, this is the underpass in Detroit, that's, that's got some public art and some paintings to it. We put some cost figures together, these are, these are very preliminary. We estimate that the Automation Alley crossing would be about three hundred sixty thousand. The good news about that is, is it's within the, the LDFA, so there is some money that can be put towards that from the existing LDFA budget. So that's why that was moved up to twenty fifteen because there's actually money set aside for this improvement. So it, it's likely that that will get done this year. And actually, in fact, the city has retained OHM, which is the traffic engineering consultant, to actually do the design of that crossing. So they're actually in construction phase right now, drawings for that crossing. The Civic Center, the Civic Center is about half a million dollars for each. These do not include the consideration of a left-hand turn out of city hall, this is just the crossing. And then the I-75 is three hundred thousand, or give or minus three hundred thousand for those improvements each. Source of fundings, LDFA money for the crossing at Automation Alley. The Civic Center crossing might be eligible for the transportation alternative programs. That's basically is both a SEMCOG and a, and a MDOT funding source for non-vehicular pedestrian, or non-vehicular transportation improvement. So basically they've grouped, anything non-motorized, they've grouped into this TAP funding source that you, it's a competitive bidding process that you have to, you have to go after. The bids for these are due in April of twenty thousand fifteen. We are not going to make the April twenty thousand fifteen for this, for this round, so we would probably roll that over to twenty sixteen. I-75 improvements and funding are really contingent upon what MDOT would allow us to do. As, I'm sure everyone's aware in this room, Oakland County, seventy-five in Oakland County is proposed for major, uh, uh, construction project, three billion, I think it's three billion dollar construction project, all the way through twenty... construction project, three billion, I think it's a three billion dollar construction project, all the way through twenty thirty, Ali, do you know, it's twenty thirty, something around that. Yeah, they're gonna actually be adding lanes to seventy-five all the way through Oakland County. Unfortunately, this section of seventy-five is the last of the phase. So it would be the last one to be done and this, there's no dedicated funding for this yet. So whether we see the I-75 done in, in my lifetime, I, I don't know. I don't know, that, that's, that's, the, the plan is to improve seventy-five. All that being said, we're not sure how much money MDOT would be willing to put into the underpass now if they're gonna rip it up or improve it in the near, in the future. So that's why I had to throw that out there. All the projects will require some city contribution, there, the city has money available in the budget to, to kind of arrange for, for pedestrian improvements. It's just of, of how much the city council wants to prioritize these projects. And lastly, we, we do are gonna look towards sponsorship opportunities for, for private businesses along seventy-five, or along Big Beaver and how much they would be willing to invest to improve the area.
Why are we, why is that stretch of it the last or amongst the last?
It's the MDOT decision, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly why that was chosen as the last.
There were public hearings at the Civic Center, everything, all of those improvements.
That's a southern part of it, isn't it?
No, it goes all the way down to, it's all Oakland County. So here we are in the process of the Big Be, of, of that, of these, of the Big Beaver Symposium. It's so, we met with MDOT and the road commission, it was a productive meeting. They had some concerns about the Civic Center crossings I mentioned, as well as the seventy-five improvements. They were, they were on board with the Alter or the, or the Automation Alley crossing. So we're still working with them to, to, to identify the issues with the other two sites. So we're, we're continuing to, to meet with them and figure out how we can keep this moving. We wanna go back and meet with the, the original working meeting group, which included stakeholders such as the business community and elected officials.
And the planning commission chairman.
And the planning commission chairman, to discuss the plan and present the plan to them. Based on that discussion, then we'll, we'll start seeking more funding and, and move forward. So that's. Any questions on, yes?
Did you talk about lowering the speed limit?
Yeah.
Pretty obvious.
Yeah, we talked about it, it's not gonna happen.
In fact, we, we raised the issue with them, with the road commission, they said, if we actually, if they actually did a traffic study of Big Beaver, the warrants would actually support increasing the speed limit rather than decreasing. So they said, don't go down that road. Yeah.
Their primary concern is the traffic.
Their, their, their concern is getting, is getting traffic through, through as quick as possible. Which is contrary to what the state requires, which is complete streets, which is a requirement of the state. So there's some competing interests and, and neither side's right nor wrong, they're just, we have to find a solution.
So how are we gonna satisfy the walkability when we have them going fifty-five miles an hour?
That's a question.
You went down that road, didn't you?
It's a question we have.
You couldn't even carry on a conversation, I think the chairman mentioned that.
Mr. Dango. Brett, do you remember what kind of response or feedback we got from the county when we showed them the Big Beaver study years ago?
Yeah.
Quiet, quiet, did they laugh?
No, they, they, once they were, once they understood that it wasn't proposed to negatively impact the traffic, they were fine with it, with everything. But their main concern was, was reducing the ability to move traffic through this, through the city of Troy. Once, once they realized we're not talking about, about reducing lanes, we're not talking about slowing, you know, putting up, reducing the speed. They were fine with it.
If I recall, that plan really did try to tone down the speed and try to create a little bit more of a, a safer way. Not so much boosting the speeds up and making it more of a, leaning towards a freeway than it was.
Well, I, I, toning, toning down by, by improve, by improving the sense, the sense of enclosure between the buildings and the street and doing it in kind of a natural way by, by having pedestrian activity on the street and art and, and at least more, more people. And so, so I suppose, yes, in, in that respect, that's a way of, of slowing it down, but it's not, it was not a heavy-handed approach. It did, did not propose reducing the right-of-way, reducing the, the traffic lanes or anything like that. You know, that's, that was the attempt with the, with the move across Troy was to get people safely and conveniently across without negatively impacting, you know, traffic flow. We're trying to, we're trying to strike a balance.
And, 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 Mr. Tre, we, we did raise the issue of traffic speed to him and said, you know, I, we can throw all sorts of measures, but we have cars going fifty-five miles an hour. It's not a pleasant pedestrian environment and they're, they're not interested in looking at reducing the speeds.
Has anyone discussed the, the limits of the stoppage and the starting? It seems like there's a real, the, the, the motorized, motorized path seems to be very, very long, which seems to actually promote faster movement.
Singulation was discussed, I mean, no, no details about how that would.
I know Dr.
Abraham.
Abraham wanted to actually increase the length of all the stops and red lights and have more traffic going through. But again, that's destroying, I mean, you know, you really, when you go from one to another, man, you can really pick up a lot of speed. You're not going forty-five, you're going fifty-five.
Yes. So, so the Big Beaver Recorder Study, it's, I think it was adopted in oh-eight, oh-seven? But it called for, it's, it, the study said that the Big Beaver Recorder could support ten thousand additional residential units. Now, I'm not here sitting here saying that that's gonna, we're gonna get ten thousand extra residential units anytime soon. But we are, as indicated, we are getting more. And there could be a exciting mixed use, there may or may not be an exciting mixed use project on the horizon, okay? So I think the conversation could potentially change here. We've got significantly more pedestrian activity, significantly more enclosure and all these things with the Big Beaver Recorder, all, this vision of the Big Beaver Recorder, it's happening. I mean, just, you all see it, it's happening and we're, we're gonna have more activity, we're gonna have more people living there and maybe the conversation will change at that point. I don't know, but the, there's progress on, on, we're, we're starting to achieve the vision of the Big Beaver Recorder Study. So my hope is when, when we start to see even more measurables like people walking and more activity, maybe the conversation will change.
Mr. Cruz.
I'm just, you know, you talk about, we already have all this increased pedestrian activity with anticipation that there could potentially be even more if some of these other developments come in. And I guess it makes me wonder at what point though, do we wanna encourage any more pedestrian activity if we can't get any cooperation to decrease speeds or to decrease traffic movement such that people feel comfortable walking on Big Beaver? Guess what I'm saying is are we banging our head against a wall? Would we be better served to stress walkability somewhere else or spend the money somewhere else if we're gonna throw all these people on Big Beaver and have this huge problem and can't get any road cooperation and it's just a free-for-all? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I would say, we're, we're gonna start with the Alter Crossing and then we'll hopefully do the Big Beaver Crossing. And, and that will serve as somewhat of a model, like, so we'll, we'll, we'll build one and we can point to and say, do it like that, that's how we do it. And then we, after, after six months, a year, two years, we know what works really well and what doesn't work really well. And maybe we got a hundred percent right the first time, maybe we gotta tweak it a little bit for the next time we do it. But the, 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 the hope is that we're gonna have these, more of these along Big Beaver, more mid-block crossings. So there's more places to safely cross. Now, is it the same as slowing traffic speeds down? No, and I hear, I, I hear what you're saying, what everyone's saying loud and clear. But if we can increase the number of these crossings and then maybe we get a, maybe we get a significant development that has a above-grade crossing, like another bridge. And, you know, it's all kind of, there, there's a number of steps. The first step was the vision of the Big Beaver Recorder Study, then the zoning ordinance and then all these developments that, and, and, and we've talked about, you know, maybe the next step and we're working on this is, is not having the one-story development, but you have to have multiple stories, that's another step. And the residential, all these things are, are steps, part of a process for, for, so it's, I, I wanna say like, be patient, like, we're getting there. It's, it's, it's difficult when, when something as simple as, well, all we have to do is lower the speed limit, it's pretty, kinda everyone, most people at this table agree that that's kind of a no-brainer. It's not our road though, so, I mean, we're getting there, that's a long-winded attempt at answering your question.
And, and I think it's, it's naive of us to think that people aren't really doing it. People are doing it, so we need to make it safe, people are across the road now, so we need to make it safer for them.
That's a little surprising, the county doesn't recognize safety of the pedestrian as much as they do moving their car.
They do, they do, and actually a comment, comment of the road commission was, well, we shouldn't be encouraging such dangerous behavior, behavior. By a comment, and, and we said, well, you know, we have to recognize that people are doing it, so we need to make it a safer environment for them. So it, it, I, I think they're still not fully understanding that, that what really is happening out here.
As I, as I recall the Big Beaver Study, didn't it have a couple of lanes on either side of the main lanes that were, you know, with the traffic calming and slow and, and.
Like a frontage slip road.
Yes, right.
Yeah, that, that, that's never, that's never really taken off because, because there, there's no, there's no budget to, to pay for that out of public funds. So it's really, it's really kind of on the, on the, on the responsibility of the developers to pay for that. And it's difficult on a piecemeal basis to kind of put a little bit here and a little bit there. You know, it's something you really probably to do it right, wanna do it one, one shot.
Well, then I, then I think we're complex with that, is the fact that, you know, we want all the developers to bring the buildings up closer to the road. I don't think there'd ever be room for those other two lanes like the Big Beaver Study showed.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think there is, there's, yeah, there's.
We measured off, it can fit within the existing right-of-way.
Two hundred and four feet, yeah.
It would, but it would, it would, sorry, it would require the elimination of at least one or two existing travel lanes now.
Okay.
Be kind of reconfiguration of the travel lanes.
I, I think the challenge with Big Beaver is to recognize that the, the new vision for Big Beaver no longer is compatible with the vision for Big Beaver that existed thirty or forty years ago. So it's, it's recognizing that and implementing the most efficient changes and also understanding that Big Beaver belongs to the road commission and not, it's not a city road. So there, there's that challenge in the mix as well. And I think that the, the solutions that are going to make Big Beaver safe and efficient are going to be a combination of the road commission's solutions as, as well as the ideas and the visions that are pretty aggressive and progressive that the city is putting forth. And I think that those, striking a balance between those two is what's gonna make Big Beaver efficient. Because Big Beaver thirty, forty years ago was basically, the road commission has, their intention is move traffic efficiently and safely. That's basically the, those are the priorities. And the priorities seem to be changing into combining pedestrian traffic and also bike traffic for, for the new, the new vision of Big Beaver, what we want ten, fifteen years from now. And I think that's the challenge to combine those two, you know.
Mr. Sazik.
I just wondered if you considered having more no right turn on red at some of these major intersections.
That was raised, that was, it was actually a recommendation in the report, talked about, about that.
Yeah, but I think a lot of people who do cross feel pretty unsafe.
Yeah, yeah.
There's traffic zooming around.
Yep, and they also, I mean, there, there are much more detail in the report I didn't get to. There's something called a leading pedestrian interval where it's a red light, they actually allow, they turn the crosswalk sign on to allow pedestrians three to five seconds to get into the intersection before they have the green light so people know that pedestrians are there. So there's a lot of small tricks, no red on red, et cetera, that are in the report that I, I just didn't highlight, I just highlighted the main, the three main points.
Mr. Tre.
Yeah, piggyback onto what Brett was talking about, the psychological effect of bringing everything together. Right now, one of the biggest things that I object to is that Big Beaver is nothing more than a continuation of Metropolitan Parkway. And with the highway lighting all the way across there, that, that to me just indicates it's a highway. And like you said, the psychological effect, I think is real crucial there. If they would have the, some of the developments that we had, have those small coach lights, you can really see the effect of that. If that were done all the way across, it'd be just tremendous, as far as I'm concerned, especially in the evenings, just to slow everybody down.
How much more, how much more expensive is the, I know it is really expensive, but the old, the bridges?
Significantly.
We did a bridge at the traffic center with elevators, so.
Yeah, the span is much, you know, we're talking at least two hundred and four feet because that's the right-of-way width. The spans is much longer.
You have to have a landing spot too, so if you start the bridge in, in this new development, it's gotta go somewhere, so it's, there's some logistics involved.
Well, these estimates that you have showing up here for these, these other style, purely pedestrian, to, to me, didn't seem all that unreasonable. And if the city council can find room for the budget in one or two of those, that would really be a good start.
We put a restaurant center right up.
Just like they do.
The Turnpike.
And I think Ali made a really good point, this is not to badmouth the road commission at all because they're, they're partners in all of this and so we have to work together. And I think we are just starting to dialogue with them, so. It was, it was a good, it was a productive meeting.
Yeah.
So Brett and I met with seventeen students, two weeks, or three weeks ago. It was a cross-section of both Troy High School and Troy Athens students. And we were shocked at how professional they were, mature they were. I, I, I was nothing like that when I was seventeen, eighteen years old. I mean, they came in, it was, actually it was longer than that, it was, it was, it was, they had their, it was a day off school, it was a holiday, I forgot which one. They came in on a day off school and they were all professionally dressed and I, I mean.
Martin Luther King Day.
Martin Luther King Day, and so, yeah, they, 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 it was very, very eye-opening and it was great. So I, I commend the city and, and, you know, for having such, such great students.
We, we, we tried to, who selected the students?
We asked the school, we sat, we talked to the principals of each school and said, please send ten students from each school that represents your school. And they, I think they're all of them, but except for one or two were seniors. So they were on the high, we were hoping to get a little more freshmen, sophomores, but they were more on the higher, the, the older age group, so.
And, and we ordered pizza and pot and salad and we said, tell the students who's gonna, we're gonna feed them. Cause it was at lunchtime on the day off, it said, we'll be smart, we'll feed them. Well, the, the, the principals never told them that there was gonna be pizza. So all these students showed up and I'm patting myself in the back thinking, I'm brilliant. Because of, because of me or my idea to order food, you know, it was a no-brainer, we got everyone here. They didn't even know there was food, no one told them. They, they came because they wanted to come and they wanted to participate, it was, it was really, really awesome, really good.
And all of them are going to college, they're all going to school next year. We had some, we had, one, one's going to Harvard, one's going to Columbia, I mean, just very high, you know, high educated group. So we started out by doing this, what we call, we call this a one-word game. So we ask everyone to tell us one word to describe, and I, we might have done this with the planning commission. Describe Troy today and describe Troy in ten years. And we got some really good answers I, I put on the, on the screen. We didn't get down until the second or third to last person where we got the first negative connotation with Troy today and that's boring. So we are very impressed with, with some of the responses. And then Troy in ten years, we're starting to, starting to see, we're trying to get to their more diverse education, safer. So they had some very positive feelings about Troy today as well as Troy in ten years.
Mr. Cooper?
When you invite from the high schools in Troy, can you also make it a point next time to invite from International Academy East and Niles Community High School? There's four high schools in Troy, we always forget the other two.
Will do. We asked them a, a, a number of questions, we had an interactive polling and, and these are just the responses we've got. So we asked them what they liked the best about Troy, the, the number one thing they chose was the schools. Some other scattered answers are parks and entertainment options and clubs and sports, but schools, they, they really enjoyed their high school experience and, and school experience in Troy.
Just to be clear, we used the, the clickers, Mr. Evans, Mr. Trent, the clickers from that Oakland, we borrowed them from Oakland County, so we partnered with Oakland County. So the, the, this is the results of the clickers and what's really effective, we use it for the neighborhood forum as well. What's, what's, what's really effective there is, it's not so much the data, because there's only seventeen students, so it's not like really, you know, representative survey of high school students. But it's a conver, it's a good way to initiate conversation. And you could talk about the outliers and, and, and things like that, so it really was effective, I think, in, in getting people.
So the, what they liked least about Troy was the lack of entertainment, they said there's nothing to do here, they said they have to go to Royal Oak and they have to go to Birmingham, they have to go to Rochester to, to do anything.
But they still go to the mall.
They go to the mall.
The hangout place.
A lot of people said that they like to, they would like to be able to bike and walk more places and there's just not the opportunity to do that here. And then lastly, lack of amenities, I think one person answered that. Uh, this is a little small, but we asked them, would you move back to Troy after you graduated or staying here in Troy once you started working? Most. Um, most, uh, twenty percent said yes, uh, twenty-some percent said no way, and the rest sixty said maybe. So we asked them, okay, let's say you do move back, what's the reason? They said number one was you're close to the family. Um, and number four, they, a, a scattering of reasons, girlfriends and other, other scattering of reasons. Um, but three, cool place to be, one person said Troy's a cool place to be. Um, so we asked them, then if you didn't move back, why would you not move back? Um, lack of jobs, which I'm not sure if that's necessarily how accurate that was. But mostly it was lack of entertainment, um, and other, other reasons. They said basically they just want to be in a big city and Troy's not the place that they want to be.
But you know, I think that's almost universal. Everybody graduates in college, wants to go to the north side of Chicago as a Mecca for a couple of years. And then they have a great time, then they've got to get serious about getting a job or if they're getting married. Then now they're looking at families, and they went back up in Troy or communities just like they grew up in.
Yeah. Um, so we asked what Troy needs, they said number one, entertainment, we need more things to do here. Um, they threw out some options of what we should be, they, they said the theater was huge, they were so glad that we got the theater. They think that is a big bonus, entertainment was what.
Thousand nights.
Thousand nights, exactly.
Places to hang out, just to hang out.
So that was it, there, there's much, there's much more detail I put in the report about it, but I just want to quickly add what we heard from the students.
And now we'll hand the, hand the clicker over to Karen and she can present.
So we had, we had a name, the homeowners association forum. The city has on file, I believe it's nineteen homeowners associations, they have a record of nineteen. I know there are more in the city, but they, we only have on file nineteen. So we sent out letters to all the nineteen presidents and we got ten, um, representatives from the homeowner, from the homeowners associations at a meeting.
You know, isn't that a little skewed? I mean, we've got one quintillion, one, one section of Troy. Nobody lives in it apparently.
Yeah, right.
What are we missing?
Yeah, for whatever reason, maybe there's not as many active homeowners associations in that area. So if anyone's watching on TV and, and, and you're in an active homeowners association, I strongly encourage you to register, the president registered their email with, with the city of Troy and you'll be on an email list and you'll be up to date on what, on events and, and, you know.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get their email.
Email blast, yeah.
So obviously we are heavily skewed for our west of Liberoi, north of Waddles, the north, then, you know, the northwest portion of, of the city. Again, we did the one word game and got, got some very nice answers. Um, we, one person threw out random and we had a long debate about what's random about Troy. Um, Karen, do you want to go into more, more depth what that discussion was?
Wasn't that Sunil?
Yeah.
Sunil thought that Troy was very random because he said that there was a lack of connectedness to anything. You get in your car and you drive to a destination, you get in your car again and you drive to the next destination. But in no way is it connected to your first destination. Everything is just sort of randomly placed throughout the city without any sort of connectedness is, is what I understood him to mean when he said random.
Yeah.
That was not my word.
No, what was your word?
My word was evolving.
And progressive.
No, my word, my other word was envied in ten years. I have high hopes for that, high hopes.
Um, my favorite was Birmingham with more parking. Someday maybe.
Yeah, well, ship has sailed unfortunately.
Um, so what people liked best about living in Troy, not surprisingly, was the schools. Um, and then entertainment, public safety and housing all kind of were, were next. The biggest challenge, um, surprisingly was transportation options. They said pretty much, um, if you don't have a car, you're, you're stuck here. Um, I think half the group was surprised that we even had a bus system in Troy.
Yeah, I had no idea.
Yeah. Um, and that people actually use the bus system. So, uh, we had a long discussion on transportation options and what we need to do to increase.
That's a smart system.
Smart system, yeah, yeah. Brent, do you have anything you want to add on these news too?
No, um, there's more slides, right? Yeah.
So then we want to focus specifically on what their, their individual neighborhood is, is dealing with. And, um, the biggest issue that their individual neighborhood was, was facing was property upkeep and code enforcement. They said, due to the downturn in the economy, a lot of places have become rentals and other issues that property donor can't afford to maintain their house. And so there's property upkeep issues and they want the city to be a little more diligent on, on enforcement of that. And lastly, um, this was a big one, was, was no walkable destinations. We had a number of people say they want to walk someplace where they can, you know, their house where they can go get a, you know, a cup of coffee or go quick convenience grocery store and there's just not enough, not any options for them. So they said they have to get in the car just to even get a daily, their daily services.
There's no place to walk and get an ice cream cone. I mean, there really isn't.
So we talked about des, walkable destinations and what we're trying to do here and that was a, that was a long topic of discussion as well too. Um, so obviously one of the issues that we've always heard whenever we have developments in, uh, in Troy coming from the planning commission is the transition between single family and the commercial property. And obviously this is really important on Rochester Road, but there are other locations in the city where we have this issue. So we asked them what, what they feel is most important way or best way to address this issue. Uh, sixty percent said just require greater landscaping buffers. I think that meant, means both in terms of the width of that buffer as well as the height and density of the landscape screen. I think it meant all, all of those. Um, compatible uses and height was also raised, but really they, it was more discussion on the landscape buffers and we need to have more landscaping between uses. I'm gonna, I didn't include a whole section, we brought up assisted living and asked like three or four pointed questions on assisted living and that was not a concern of any, of anyone in, in the group that we hit. I think that's a very localized issue if it comes in your neighborhood as a concern, but for the most part it didn't seem to be an issue, uh, with people. So I didn't include that data in, in this. Um, what housing option is missing in Troy, almost a hundred percent said just smaller independent, single-family, uh, housing options.
Ranches.
Yep.
Yep.
No ranches.
Yep. Um, and then someone said seniors assisted living, but, but obviously that was, those other ones were, were not, uh, not a missing option. So, um, and this is something that we've been telling developers, we meet with them frequently, we tell them this is what people want. Um, and for some reason they just said they, they can't build them, they won't, they won't build them. So I, I think that will change, but that's kind of what we're hearing from the development community on that. But next time I'm gonna show them this and say, this is the number one response we got, so. Um, and what automobile transportation, non-automobile transportation is missing, um, bus, which I was surprised people put bus because what they said is those that knew we had a bus system, it says it doesn't go to where I need to go, it doesn't link up between important destinations and it's not accessible from where I live. I have to walk two miles to get there, whatever, whatever the distance is, so. Um, bus, but they'd also like to look at bike lanes and, and as well as trails. You do want to jump in here, I, I don't want to steal anyone's thunder here, so.
What was this done, was this done about the town?
This was done a week ago.
Week ago, so this is right after the article about the man walking twenty-one miles to work.
Yes.
Yeah. We talked about that.
We talked about him, we talked about him.
It was amazing, you know, really.
Yeah, and it's.
I'll reach out to all the communities.
It's surprising, we had it in the community center and it's surprising how many employees of the community center actually take the bus to get there. Uh, uh, it.
To the community center.
Yeah, employees that work there, custodial staff, some of their, you know, the support staff, a lot of them take the bus to get there.
And the mall, Somerset Mall.
In the mall.
And the restaurants.
So the service workers, a lot of them are using the bus to, 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 you know, to get their employees, place employment at home. Um.
This, this next slide to the left was which city or community amenities are lacking? I think other was kind of a mixed bag.
Yeah.
I think, uh, like Karen, I think you, you mentioned Dog Park and there was other people who mentioned parks facilities and it was kind of a, there was just some general different, differing comments in, in this one. Um, young professionals on the right, how can we maintain or attract young professionals, well, expanding entertainment options. Hundred percent response there. I mean, I think everyone kind of gets the fact that we need to provide more places to hang out and more, more things to do here that, the ten thousand nights that we, or.
Thousands.
Thousand nights, excuse me, we talked about. Yeah, I forgot the.
Um, the issue of Troy not having a downtown was a big discussion because a lot of people said that they go to a downtown. Then if they're going out, they're gonna go to Royal Oak or they're gonna go to Birmingham or some other place. Um, it's the Troy system now downtown doesn't have a place. You know, one of the question, one of the big debates that we had was what makes Troy Troy? What, you know, if you're on a vacation, you stay up from Troy, Michigan, someone says, give me two words to describe it, how would you describe it? Kind of like that one word game. And a lot of people said Troy doesn't really necessarily have an identity, other than we have good schools. Um, people through that. So really there, there's, there's an idea that we need to create a sense of place here, create an identity of what Troy is.
Somerset. That's it.
Yeah.
Well, but not.
That's Somerset. Collection, I should say.
Yeah.
That seems to have.
I think people want more than just to be able to say, I live in a town that has a great mall.
Yeah, I agree with you there.
I mean, it, what's Mall of America, where, where is that? That's in like Minnesota, I mean, I don't want to be Minnesota, I don't want to be where, you know, all I have is a great mall.
You know, Troy forty years ago was designed not to have a central business district, right? That was the goal. And we've developed along that corridor and now we're trying to evolve into something and changing our philosophy to make it, it'll never be a Birmingham, never be a Royal Oak, solve your speed problems and everything else, but we've got what we've got. And we're gonna have to slowly make a transformation, but it's gonna be tough with twenty-seven story buildings and this sort of stuff, uh, in your downtown.
Well, you know, it's funny you bring that up because Troy was a township and it's very hard to make a single identity in thirty square miles. You know, everything says an identity, Birmingham, I mean, those are small downtowns or small, small cities. It's very hard to, again, to make a, a, a one identity for such a large geographic area.
But, you know, back when Troy Township was converted to a city, the Lick and Lehman were the planning consultants for that. And they were very modern in their time at avant garde and they determined that everybody had small towns, small businesses. And we were going to be different, we were going to have this metropolitan, no central downtown.
Yeah.
That's why we are where we are.
We achieved that.
We did.
Mr. Tegel.
Can you guys give me an example of what's an amenity for minority populations?
Um. Churches, some cultural, um, arts, cultural institutions, those are kind of examples we threw out. Organizations.
Recreation.
Recreation opportunities.
I will answer that because I am a minority population in Troy, a temple. One of the reasons I bought a house in Troy is it was a city, we looked at Rochester, we looked at Farmington Hills, we looked at Troy and Bloomfield Hills. And Troy was the one that had the temple.
And it's beautiful.
Mr. Stratt.
We talked about the location of downtown, we missed out, we had the, the Kmart.
Yep.
Headquarters, that would have been our downtown.
I agree.
But we lost it, so.
Mr. Tregel.
Um, you know, we're talking about, uh, we don't have that identity. What we do have is a very diverse population and back in the day when we were doing the study on futures twenty twenty, we were, we were, we can see, or different concepts were to have, just like we have those nodes at major intersections, we were thinking about nodes for, for different cultural centers. Because we have a Polish area, we definitely have an Indian area, we have a Chinese area, mostly on John Arv. Uh, and I drift most into, uh, Madison Heights. But we have, we have a Greek area, you, 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 you know, you could have a Greek town, uh, an Indian village, you could have, you know, Polish. We've got all those things, we just haven't decided to do it, you know, to create those ethnic nodes around the city. That would make Troy, that would give Troy an identity like this is a world-class worldview city. And that's, that was in twenty twenty, that's like, I don't know, when we did that, fifteen years ago?
Mr. Stratt.
Sense of place is something that's, it's a, it's a very trendy concept nationally and, and as well as the state of Michigan. And what we also have, piggybacking on everyone's comments, we have a very, uh, relevant master plan that we're updating. And we've identified areas that we can focus on that can help strengthen our, our brand, our identity, you know, with, with Big Beaver and Maple and, and Rochester and North Troy. So we're, we're moving towards that. There's, and there's been a lot of investment, uh, lately on Big Beaver, which is going to continue and there's been some on Maple Road as well. So I think it's happening, but you, like, we're a thirty-four point two square mile community and it's going to take some time, but we're, we're on the, we're on the, our way.
Ms. Cruz.
I think that creating the downtown or creating the effect of the downtown is ultimately not that difficult to do. I mean, if you start at Waddles, you have the historical museum and village there. Hitty corner across from that, you've got Walsh College, now you've got a university. Next door to that is a church, across the street from that is a church. As you work your way towards Town Center Drive, you've got your Amber Young Urban Professional Loft apartment buildings that leads into the Civic Center area that takes you out to your Big Beaver corridor. So creating that sort of path that dumps you onto the Big Beaver corridor at Civic Center Drive is not going to be that hard to build. I mean, you're just kind of connecting places that are already in existence. And you kind of have that sort of downtown with the university, the city hall, the churches, some residential areas, the historical village and boom, you're on Big Beaver.
Mr. Stratt.
Yeah, I, I mentioned this several times before. You know, if we were really active, the main thing that I think we could do is to create a joint venture of public-private sector. And there's no reason why we're having our city hall in this private and this beautiful, uh, land that we have, which is really a, a, a real attractive area that could be developed with developers and develop this as the central point like we were talking about before for the Kresge site. I mean, and we could take the money that we, we would have here and locate down on Maple Road and then have Maple Road spirit and start getting some activity down there. We could have all of it paid for probably if we were actually to sell this in joint venture. But I, I mentioned that several times and I, I mentioned it before and I feel, uh, it, it seems not to go anywhere. So I, I know that this is very, very, uh, takes a lot of guts to do this. I don't know if the city would have that kind of, and I mentioned it to you too.
Yeah, and I know that, I remember what this community went through with the proposal for the convention center and the use of city land for that. And that was a really issue that really divided the entire community.
This is a prime piece of land here.
I totally agree with you. I agree with you.
Unreal, right off I seventy-five, the exposure that it has.
It's gonna take selling to a, a, a group, a, a group of very local residents who would be opposed to using any of the Civic Center site land for other, for commercial purposes, so. I, I'm not saying it can't be done under the right circumstances, but.
I'll tell you, I, I.
Oh, I agree.
And it has, you'd have to be progressive in order to have that, progressive thinking.
Well, it's like, it's like Ms. Cruz has, has mentioned before that, you know, you want young professionals to, to come to the use of the Civic Center and everything and there's no coffee shops, you know, uh, um, in this area, so.
You need a bookstore, you need a place to get a snack, ice cream, coffee, you need to connect all of these things to the next thing so that you keep that traffic and that movement going.
All contestants.
So our last question was, okay, um, Troy's a big area, where, where should we be focusing and the majority felt Big Beaver Road.
But we didn't offer Town Center and Civic Center as an option, see?
Okay. That's, that's all I have.
So that's our update?
I think it's good update.
It is good.
Very good. You've written a nice show.
Thank you.
Got some more forums, we'll keep you posted on when those are, when we schedule them. And, um, keep moving on this.
Mr. Tregel.
Ten years ago, when the Monarch Project was proposed on Big Beaver, I produced a map showing an intersection at, basically at Todd and McClure. Uh, it's, the, the distance between a crossing on Big Beaver between Crooks and Coolit, there's one that's basically, uh, under that cross bridge that crosses between the two parts of, uh, the Somerset Collection. So for four fifths of a mile, there's no crossing. And I proposed this, as a matter of fact, I proposed one earlier than this, more than a couple decades ago. And again, this road commission is just, there's no way we're gonna put another crossing on Big Beaver. And again, this road commission is just, there's no way we're gonna put another crossing on Big Beaver. Yet, and we've looked at those other areas yet. If people are talking about the most congested and in the future more, most congested area of Big Beaver is between Crooks and Coolit. That's where the giant shopping district is. I think a focus, I didn't see any on, you know, on our, what do you call it, presentation today. But I think that's the focus, to get another crossing midway between that one near Somerset and Crooks Road. So, as a matter of fact, I did my little S or Z pattern the correct way too. Pass that.
Oh, good. You can be a traffic engineer.
The, the document does call for mid-ball crossings in this area. We focused on the priorities and, and one of the reasons that Altera was a priority was first and foremost, they were, they were at the forefront of this complaining about their, their employees that are crossing Big Beaver at great risk. And there's, there's a significant amount, and they were, they were in attendance at the, at the meeting. They were kind of driving the bus on this, so. And it's also just, it, it, it's the most supportable at this time for various reasons. It's in the LFAA and it's, there's a bunch of reasons.
It's a quick win.
It's a quick win. It's a quick win that we can point to and say, that's how you do it. So.
Long-hanging fruit.
Yeah. And, and, yeah, I agree with you. This is a, this, this, one of, one of the, one of the common reasons people cross here is the Maggiano relationship. And now with the retail that's closer to your, your place, there's, there's cross traffic. So, agreed. That, that is a priority.
Yep, it is.
It's not top three, but it's, it's right there.
Yes, Ms. Cooper.
How are you getting people to come to the other forums? And is it by invitation? Is how, how will people come to know?
The next forum on the, we haven't really talked about it.
Well, so when we, when we originally, we kicked this off as we, we had what we called a real estate forum. We invited stakeholders from each of the four areas that we were mostly focused on, which was Rochester Road, Big Beaver, Maple Road and North Troy. Based on the recommendations on that, we have put together small focus groups out of that for each sub area, which we're gonna show the plans to each sub area. At some point, there will be a public workshop, public meeting, public open house invited to all residents so they can come and comment on the plans. But we're really only focusing, the master plan was done five years ago. It's a very solid plan. It had, had significant public outreach and public comment. We're really at the point now where we're just tweaking small parts of the master plan. So the, so we're really only focusing on those four areas, but there will be a full public engagement process with the general public moving forward.
So we've got workshops that are geographically based, like focused on the sub areas that we talked about. But the next workshop or forum that we're gonna have that's not geographically based is a senior forum. And we've got some active senior organizations that will assist us in giving the word out to, to the senior residents of the city. I, I anticipate that, that workshop is gonna be very, very well attended. I've already had, I've got people calling and emailing on a regular basis asking for the date and they want to make sure that they're able to attend. So I think that'll be a really good one. That's, that's a workshop that I really like to drag some of the development community to and tell the development community, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna review your site plan until you attend this meeting so that you hear what people have to say about housing options.
I think we've got some representative senior community at this table.
Okay, I think we're ready then to move on to public comment for items that are on the current agenda. Seeing no one in the audience, we will move on to planning commission comments. Let's begin with Mr. Sanzito.
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Apahidi.
I think, I mean, personally I've heard a lot of great ideas, great, just in the two meetings that I've been here already. And I, I think one of the challenges that I see is meshing the input that comes from all these forums. The, the different demographics have different visions, they have different ideals for what Troy should look like. And, and the challenge is meshing everybody to, to somehow fulfill or, or everybody's vision for Troy to be implemented in, in their piece of the pie to make the, make Troy ideal and attractive to that demographic and not exclude them at all. I, I think that's probably one of the challenges.
Mr. Stratt.
I had the, a client last week where I presented to a neighboring community planning commission. And I really commend our planning commission from the standpoint of the simplicity in comparison to some other communities. We had to submit full drawings that were civil engineering drawings to this. I mean, he spent a lot of money on an FCOM basis. And that's what we were doing before with our, what was it?
PUDs?
PUD, right. And I think we really should, I really am happy with what we've been doing. I like, I mean, it needs tweaking, obviously, I'm sure, but it's just amazing. Very professionally done, but still a lot of work.
Ms. Cruz.
The only other comment that I would have is as part of that neighborhood forum. I did sort of informally ask the people that were there what they thought about the Big Beaver corridor and what we talked about with density and, and making taller buildings and not focusing on just, what do you call, the one-story sort of Jersey Mike's AT&amp;T store, blah, blah, blah. If we wanted the visual height differences, if we wanted a landscape that caused the eye to move up and down as opposed to just straight across. And, and they're, they seem very open to that. They liked the idea of Big Beaver really looking like a dense sort of downtown area, which then brings me back around to the comment that, you know, was given to me. Well, you want to do that, Karen, that's great, but then you have to change the city ordinances. So I'm thinking maybe we need to really reconsider more seriously the idea of looking at the city ordinances and having a more serious discussion about whether we're willing to be patient over a period of time to really get what we're after, even if that means in the short term we lose a project here and some tax revenue as a result. But in the, the bigger picture, we're much happier in not slapping Band-Aids on things down the road. Does that make sense? So I guess that's my thing. If, if, if we like that idea, then let's take the next step. And we can sit and talk about it till the cows fly home, but let's take the next step.
Mixed, like cows come, cows come home and pigs fly? You mix those two together, that was cool.
Talk to me a while, you'd be surprised at all kinds of little sayings that I can come up with for your entertainment.
Yeah, I just want to apologize that I wasn't here in that meeting to welcome the two new commissioners. I look forward to working with you both as we go down this journey.
Sorry I was late. I'm learning a lot, I really am glad to be here.
No comment.
No, no comment.
I've spoken enough and I want to, a couple of things I want to thank Julie DeFrane for pinch hitting for Alan, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Regarding the Big Beaver, we, we talked about this at a previous meeting, the, the concept of requiring multiple stories along Big Beaver to get that sense of enclosure. We're, we're at the point now where, you know, if I see another one-story development with fast lunch, I'm just, I'm probably, you know, whatever. So we, we kind of, we heard what the planning commission said loud and clear. Everyone pretty well agreed that we should at least look at it. So we're gonna take a step, we being staff, we're gonna take a step, but we're gonna, we're gonna talk to some stakeholders who know a lot about investment along Big Beaver and, you know, some realtors, designers, architects, that type of thing, informally. And just kind of pick their brains and, and make sure we're going down, get their input and, and are we going down the right path? What do you think? Just informally, not, not with, not in a, in a setting that's, that's an event, but just honest constructive conversation. And we'll, we'll circle back with you and let you know what they say. Because I, I think this is, I think this definitely has traction. It's something that, at least what we've talked about so far makes a lot of sense. I think we're ready to take it to the next level.
We, we've talked to enough people who say we can't do it. We're trying to reach out to people who have done it and tell us how we can do it here.
Right. It's done other places successfully.
We're trying to reach out to those that have done it, so.
Why not here?
Give some tips.
Mr. DeFrane.
I just want to say thank you for being so welcoming to meet. Hopefully you'll have another opportunity to come back to this school to learn a lot.
I'm glad to hear that you're considering doing that and I think that the sooner the better because I heard some of the informal discussion after the meeting last time. And having these, you know, strip, what I call strip centers on Big Beaver that are, you know, the phone shop and this, it just gets really boring after a while and I think we're doing a disservice. Maybe Karen's comment about maybe we need to set our vision and maybe we need to say at a minimum, one of the buildings has to be two-story. So I think we need to, we need to push the envelope. And certainly the planning commission is, is willing to talk to any folks once you've had your informal discussions with them. But that'd be good. The only other thing I, I did want to mention, especially for the new members. Last meeting, I think, did everybody receive planning and zoning news, Kathy? Yeah. That had a really good focus and stress on the Michigan Citizen Planner. There are many, many opportunities to get your certification with the Michigan Citizen Planner. One of the ideal ones, of course, is that when you take all these courses together and you take them with other new planning commissioners and you get the benefit of the dialogue and the back and forth is at the annual conference. And this year it's in.
Detroit.
Detroit. So it's, it's not a huge expense and I certainly encourage you to take advantage of that if you can.
And there's, there's, there's an education budget for, through the, through the planning department that will, that will pay for.
Right.
Planning commissioners taking that course, especially new commissioners. It's a really good way to, to learn about planning and zoning.
I just did it and they spoon-fed me all, they condensed tons and tons of, and spoon-fed it to me and it was, it's the only way to do it. He's so worried I'm gonna take him out because I can't talk without moving my hands. He's like a lethal weapon.
Just like John's back.
I got him all nervous. But no, by all means, do it in the classroom setting where they, they spoon-feed you because it's, it's awesome.
It's in October, so you don't have to panic, it's in October.
It's a weekday?
It's, it'll be like Wednes, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Yeah. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and, and Saturday.
And Saturday morning.
Saturday morning, yeah.
It's a commitment, but you learn a lot, not, not only as a planning commissioner, but you learn just a lot about the profession and your state and you're with other people and it's, yeah.
There's seven core courses and you get them all done, you know, in one time period, which is really good. Then after that, I think you have, what, six months or a year? You can take the online examination to get certified, so it's, it's really great, so I would agree.
I don't think there's, I don't recall being told I had to take an exam. I thought it was for, if I wanted.
Maybe they've done away with that.
I think they've done away with the exam.
They've done away with the exam. I, I had to do something if I want to be like the master gold level standard. I had to do a special project, but I don't recall having.
Capstone project, yes. Okay, well, that's, that's even better.
Is that something anyone from our office has ever done?
It's more geared for planning commission members?
That would be a bad.
Benefit one of us.
Probably, wouldn't hurt you for sure.
Definitely.
Okay, that's all I have, unless there's any other comments, so we're adjourned.